Good morning, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March twenty first of two thousand and twenty-three. I have Don Schlenker, we're in flagel, myself, Mike Stein, so you're county supervisor, and Lisa and Bea Orm from the auditor's office, and I have Lou Ann, our executive assistant in the background. And we will, on our, first on our agenda this morning is a public hearing. Is Lori in the office?
I think she's not here.
Are you coming down for these hands? It is now. It was nine yes. We take budget, you never know.
We're having fun, right?
Better move office closer.
So we will, at this time, we will open the public hearing on proposed ordinance three ten McCully rezoning. And we're joined by our running, our zoning administrator.
And Ruth is right behind me.
And Ruth is right behind you.
Morning.
Lauren.
Yep, the zoning commission met the third Monday in Pittsburgh. And heard the zoning case on Terry McCully's property located just west of Seville Road on Highway sixty-four. Their recommendation to the board supervisors is that the zoning request that was made by the McCully's be granted from A one to C one highway. And we would seek your approval on that.
Was that properly at one time, commercial also?
I looked, Lisa looked, Ruth looked, we were looking for ordinance that changed it from commercial back to A. We did not find one. So what our thought was, is that maybe they were using it as commercial and it was being assessed as commercial, not some commercial, but we did not find anything.
Well, I know there was a business, a boat sale business, a bait shop, there was a motel there and.
No, I don't know about, yeah, you would, yeah, more history than I have there.
Are you saying I'm old? It was just an insinuation, I don't, I don't.
You've just Jackson had your whole life and I got it. So there, there's where I was going.
So, no, so are there any comments or question or concerns regarding this property from anyone?
The board, the board of the public.
I had not received any calls on the.
And we didn't have any objections at the, at the commission meeting.
Well, where it's located, to me, it only makes sense.
It's a good spot.
I mean, it's high traffic and it's visible. I, I know there was a business, a previous business there.
Right, yeah, but the funny thing is, we just couldn't find where it had been rezoned.
Any other comments?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second thought.
Have a motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay. Motion carried. We have a discussion, possible action to waive the second and third public hearing. Ordinance three ten to McCully residence. Res zoning, I guess. So, um, the closing public hearing, so first we'd have to have a motion to approve that ordinance and then wait the second, third.
That's what I'm saying, because this reach for me.
Yeah, well.
To me, we, we don't need to.
Well, we first have to approve the rezoning of it, so and then, then you can waive the second, third.
Yeah, on the ordinance.
And the same motion, I think you can do that.
I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance three ten. And as far as the I've done it differently in the past. We've always had to spell it out each and every one, so there's a specific motion.
I'll second your motion.
Motion and second to approve the ordinance three ten McCully rezoning as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
And I would make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed with the second and third reading.
Second thought.
Have motion and second to waive the second and third public hearing, uh, reading of the ordinance as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carried.
Go through and do the second. Vote for the second, vote for the third, just so it's all on record. This is.
Your motion was to waive that and third.
Suspend the rules and proceed with the second and third reading. Well, this is just the way it was explained to me in the past. If you guys, if it's a different way, that's fine. I don't care, as long as we're covered.
We normally just wait the second.
Okay. Good.
So I will open the public hearing at this time on the proposed ordinance three eleven. The Bellez rezoning, is that, did I pronounce that correct? Thank you. Um, little update or information, could you?
In our February commission meeting, zoning commission hearing, um, the Bellez, Tara and Diego presented, well Tara presented for them, um, their request to rezone the, the two acre gross, two gross acre parcel that's one point seven two net um, from A one to R one, but as two, uh, with rezoned into R one and to later be surveyed out into two, uh, two parcels that would be greater than the required minimum of twenty thousand square feet per, per lot. So they would wanted to rezone from A one to R one to become with the intent to split it off into two lots. Um, the zoning commission, uh, per their case, there were, uh, two neighbors present that spoke against the rezoning. There was a neighbor on the phone, Mr. Toll, that spoke in favor, did not have an issue with the rezoning, and then, um, Mrs. Duchin was also on the phone and spoke against the rezoning. The, the commission took all the evidence into into consideration and voted unanimously to request that the board consider rezoning, to recommend a rezoning to the, to the board.
Okay, any questions for Lori? I did receive, um, a couple of calls, several. Uh, some opposed or possibly opposed, and I also did receive some in favor. So I visited the property myself, actually talked to, um, one of the owners, and we discussed several of the things. It's a very unique property, um, with, with the church, of course, and the residence. Um, and the cemetery also has a bearing on, you know, what is there. Of course, we understand, I think we understand that each one of these requests, if it be, are evaluated on its own merits. So each one is not like we are setting a precedence, I don't think so. If another, another, um, request would come in, it would be evaluated again by the board. I understand that the residence, if you call it, is sitting vacant. I don't like to see that, of course. That doesn't do anything any good. My question would be, I guess, if, so each parcel would contain about how much per, like as far as acreage size? I know I looked at it, I.
Just, just shy of an acre.
Okay.
They'd be like six tenths and, um, eight tenths.
My question would be, so if ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, the church, I'm gonna call it, uh, was removed, could you rebuild with a residential home on that lot then?
You could. They, it is, it was designed when they looked at the cer, at, it possibly surveyed it into two pieces um, to make it large enough so that the sanitary sewer and well, uh, could be on that parcel by itself, if, if needed to be.
Okay, and the resident, the home, now the residence, I would call, has its own septic and, and well?
And they could do a shared well on, on, from both homes, but they would each need their own septic.
So with the minimal size of that lot, if, if they did, so I mean, if there was opposition and then, then the board decided not to, um, do that, they could still apply for a, what we call a minor subdivision though, correct? I mean, if you're gonna have, uh, it's no different than somebody coming in here, um, proposing a subdivision with, I'm just looking north of Bellevue, a couple of years ago, we did one with two homes on.
Part of the reason you do, part of the reason you're gonna do a minor subdivision, and Lisa can back me up if I misspeak, um, you do those when there's already more than three splits in a quarter, quarter. And there's not more than, there's not gonna be three splits in that quarter, quarter.
Right.
So that's, I mean, I have one that we're working on right now where it's actually two lots that's gonna be in a minor subdivision, but there's pretty like big splits in the quarter, quarter.
Yeah.
That's why that's being done, it's a minor subdivision. So this, it can actually be done as a simple plan. It does not need to be done as a minor subdivision if it's rezoned.
Um, I guess I spoke to what I thought of. Are there any more comments or, uh, concerns, uh, from the public or from the board? Questions?
I do want to, and I look at the property myself, and my reservation is the fact that the proximity of the buildings is so close to each other. One's being used as an art studio. I'm assuming they're gonna wanna sell this. I, I, you know, I don't, it, it, it just seems odd to me to to break it apart. I'm trying to, trying to. Sir, you had a question, you wanted to make a comment? Please stand up and identify yourself.
Yeah, uh, my name is Joseph Offman. Uh, address is three two eight four one, two hundred and thirtieth Avenue, LaBonne. I'm an adjoining landowner, property owner in the area. I'm third generation on our home farm. I guess I'm opposed to the zoning change because I feel it will, uh, set a precedent in the county uh, for random scattered uh, housing in the rural areas. I harbor no ill feelings toward these folks. But they've been there, I believe, eleven years, and done a darn nice job of taking care of the place. I point out that the current property owner bought this property as A one. And in fact, I believe there's a third party to do so, as it is. I believe the only reason for zoning change request is due to having difficulty selling it the way it's currently zoned. Additionally, after learning of some of the concerns from my neighbors, they had the property rezoned, I understand that you get it into two pieces that would accommodate a septic system to try to get this pushed through. I understand that. I don't believe it is the responsibility of the county supervisors to change the zoning of a property on a piecemeal basis solely for the purpose of making it more saleable to individual property owners. If this zoning request is approved, it'll open, I think, the gate for others to carve out twenty thousand square foot parcels zone R one along our county roads. As I said before, I'm third generation there. I care about protecting the land and the landscape and the area. The petitioner has made the decision to leave the county. Bought a ho, bought a house in Dubuque, they've already moved. They're now asking for a zoning change that will affect those of us who have a continuing active interest in the county. I sincerely hope our Jackson County supervisors care about the integrity of our rural landscape and their united request. Thank you.
Joe? Any other comments? Yes, sir? Sure.
Um, my name is Harvey Dush and I share a fence line with the folks, uh, they're good folks. They took good care of the place and, uh, I, I appreciated that. Uh, Diego took care of the cemetery for over ten years and did a very good job and the whole community appreciated that. However, I realize things change in life and it's not, uh, a place they wanna live no more. But the rest of us are still there and as I heard here in the meeting, it's a very unique property. This was a parish for over a hundred and fifty years. Us former parishioners will never forget that. And it's a specialty. Uh, the church, they're terrible high maintenance. It took a whole parish to keep the church up. It's not possible for one person to keep a church up, so it's kinda gonna deteriorate as it is. And, uh, they may have good intentions of wanting to do something with it, but it's almost next to impossible, uh, financially. So, being zoned day one, thinking down the road, I probably won't be here, the church probably won't be there. It's, would make a fine property just to stay the way it is for, for a single residence on that site. Thank you.
Terry? John, would you like to address the board also?
I'm John Manson. Uh, I'm on the zoning board. And I think maybe there's some misinformation about never, uh, setting a precedent because it's been done before. There's a parcel that I was on board and we, uh, it was not two acres. And for the benefit of the owners, and we listened to pros and cons and, uh, decided that it would be all right to split that parcel. So that's not a, uh, precedent. And if each case is taken case by case, about less than two acres. And I don't think there's gonna be any development here. And if you wanna develop your land, you could come to the zoning board if you wanted to take half an acre. It probably won't work because it's a tillable land and, and I don't think that you should be able to, to go less than two acres. But this is a unique, uh, piece of property. And as I said, we voted seven to nothing to allow this to happen. So, work can take that as a may in consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. And, yes, ma'am. Sure.
Um, I do have with me the.
Please state your name, ma'am.
Property.
Okay.
Um, and, um, I have with me signatures from, uh, the other two neighbors that were referenced before, so, um, Dave Toll and his wife were, were at, one of the other adjoining property owners, and then, um, his father, uh, Rich, Rick, Rick Thor, who's just a little bit further. The two of them are two of the three cemetery association, um, members as well. So the other is Calvert Styles, and I wasn't able to get to him to get the signature, but he also supports it as well as Father Austin, so two of the other adjoining property owners are in support and they are committed. So as, as, um, both Joe and Harvey mentioned, you, concerns from people who are gonna maintain ownership around us, it's not a unanimous concern. And Dave specifically knows that if we were to maintain ownership of the church, if the parcels were separated, we would do our best to maintain that property. We are not, we don't have, um, unlimited money, as Harvey mentioned, to do everything that the church needs, but we have best, our best intentions to maintain it. It's, yeah, it needs some work, especially in the bell tower, but the property is, is stable. Um, and in terms of being able to sell it, we did try only for three weeks to sell it, um, as a property and ran into some issues where, um, there was only one person interested and she wanted to do a land contract and were interested in that, but we realized at that point that we needed a Realtor. So we did have some Realtors come out, they helped us talk about amounts and, and the, the Realtor, it was a team of Realtors. They believe that the house is actually a little appealing by itself, even though they're close together, which made us think, we wanted to keep the church, so if that's what they're telling us, that's a win for us, because we want the church. So that was when we, we grouped and started working with Lori to try to separate parcels and when that didn't go through, we first attempted to do commercial. And all of the neighbors were concerned about that. Um, so we kind of put things on hold because it's been a baby, and then after I had a baby, kind of restarted, um, with it, tried to do R one because the tools were supportive of that as well as the cemetery didn't have concerns with it being R one instead of commercial. So, um, part of it is, uh, we wanna sell the house, of course, uh, but we wanna keep the church too, so, um, it, I, I hope that it isn't setting a precedent. We're open to whatever. What, obviously, this is outside of our control. We want the church, we'd like to maintain it, we love the property, as they said. I also took care of the cemetery, just to be clear. Um, we have maintained that cemetery and property for, you know, eleven years, well, we love it out there. I wanted to be in town, we outgrew the home. Uh, my husband would've stayed there forever. He loves it. If he can keep the church, um, you know, it would make our life easier. I understand that's not what you're looking at, but, you know, Lori really helped us think through all the ways to make this as best as possible for the neighbors in the future. And we are committed to our, to that property. We've had a lot of history out there. We've had all of our children except for come there. We love it. Um, it's a beautiful space. Uh, and we'd like to be a part of that community in the future, so. Even if we're not living there, we'd still be part of it.
Are you using the church right now as an art gallery, if I understand it?
My husband, yeah, he works out there. He's doing some sculpture restorations right now, but there's no heat. So it's a li, little limited in the winter about how we can use it. Uh, we had started to fix up the, the sacristy, the small room off of the side and have plans to keep that so that you can actually use it year round. But right now, there's no heat at the church.
Good.
So thank you, Tara. I respect, uh, and I thank you for your efforts over restoring and keeping the cemetery intact. It's are there any other comments to be heard?
Mike, this is Monica McHugh. I would like to, uh, um, make a comment. Uh, sorry, I was gonna try and be there in person, had a meeting run over. Uh, I am the chair of the zoning board. Uh, and the, when we looked at this property, it, it is, as John said, this is a very unique situation. Um, there really isn't a whole lot of development that can really occur outside of this property just because of, it's basically landlocked, you have the street in front of it, you know, the home. And I think this is the, uh, best possible resource for this property, uh, to be able to, uh, for the family to keep the church. And it does fit within our zoning. And so I think it's a good fit, um, for the county and, uh, also for, uh, the current property owners. Um, but I would also duplicate exactly what John said. Um, we did look at this and we did vote seven to zero to support this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Uh, any more comments or questions for anyone here? Um, again, um, I appreciate the fact that the zoning board meets and takes all, everything into consideration. I don't like to see a property sit vacant. That is worse than not. Um, again, with, with the aspect of the cemetery, the church, the, the housing, um, I don't see a lot of negative issues for it. Um, I re, on the other hand of it, I mean, on the same hand of it, I sure do respect the work that the zoning board does and I respect their opinion. So that's all I really have to say about it.
My only reservation, I understand it's within the, the guys at the zoning ordinance is enough to go ahead and s, split this property apart. I guess I have no problem with that. My, my only major concern is the fact that degrees of separation away from the property, um, that's a big building, partially gonna be partially heated. The deterioration rate of that church will kind of speed up. And the farther away you get from that, living or otherwise, is, um, I would hate to see somebody living next to somebody else's property that's deteriorating, you know? That's my only big concern is because those buildings are very close together. Is, I know that Tara spoke to the desires to keep it in our studio for as long as possible. That is the intent. Intentions change. You guys bought the place with the intent of staying there forever. Things change, life changes, circumstances change. That's my only major concern is at some point, if the art studio doesn't work, it becomes, companies find a different place. What keeps that, but that, that problem's there regardless of the rules or, or whatever. Um, I don't know, so that's my only concern.
Any other, other input?
I mean, I guess I'm not totally against it since we do have two structures there. Type of a deal, you know, we're not just going out and subdividing off barely here to make it an R one, there are two structures there.
Then may I add to that? They're not just two structures, they're both considered two principal use structures. Yeah, they would both have use individually, um, the way they are.
And I respect Don's opinion as far as deterioration and Harvey's too, you know, I, I respect your concerns, guys. Um, again, I would rather see it maybe try to be maintained than to just let it go. So hopefully it's maintained to the best of the ability if, if something does happen that they can uh, go as long as we can, you know, and there's a lot of history for you guys with that church, you know, I mean, you're half a mile away and we're parishioners or whatever, but, uh, yeah, it's one of them things that, uh, progression moves on and, and we go from there, so. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Well, what happens next when the church, I wouldn't need to worry about this, but thinking about the rest of the neighborhood with the best of intentions, uh, the church, as the gentleman indicated, it's on a mission to collapse, that all these closed parishes, I look around, even in Coqueta here, old parishes, you, you just become rubbish piles. My question is, what comes next? That somebody wants to build another house and then you've got two of them just like this here squeezed in there? I don't think that makes very good neighbors for those two. They're too close together out in the country.
Well, if the church gets removed, um, I actually think that becomes more advantageous for that church property because the house could be built. If somebody wants to tear the house down and build a house, the house could be built farther away from the, the rectory that would be there now, so, um, I just, I just don't want that, the church falling down when somebody's living right next to it when they're different owners.
That's a good point.
I don't like that. But again, how many old school houses were sit deteriorated all around this county forever until they were torn down and houses put up? How many houses in this county here are just abandoned, left abandoned? So if that does happen, I just don't like the proximity. Not that I'm not that I'm against this, because again, do you keep the property the way it is and the house directory sits vacant? Or do you separate it? And they can use it, the church as an art studio a little bit and try to keep it going and maybe sell the house, which I think will be a good sell. And they can use it at the church as an art studio a little bit and try to keep it going and maybe sell the house, which I think will be a neat sell. I don't know how many people are looking for a house right next to a church and a cemetery, but, you know. At least somebody would be there, and then if the church falls down, you know, it's one of those things. It's just an unusual thing, my biggest problem is how close those two sit together, if it was another fifty, hundred feet apart, I, whatever. But if that church was to be tore down, the house could be moved away. And then setback ordinances and things like that would come into play and. Proximity neighbors, you know, there are subdivisions in the county that are set relatively close together to the house, so.
Well, I think we're, you could look at this a zillion different ways, I mean. The church does get to that point of it is deteriorated down so far. Then whoever owns, quote, the house portion. Could have the whole. The option to buy the whole section.
And rezone the thing back where.
Rezone it back to where it was. Build a brand new house, redo the house that's there, what, you know. You got a lot of options at that point where we get to. The church is unusa- unusable.
Could I ask one question? If, if, if at some point the church isn't viable, why can't it be zoned back to A one and have a single residence up there? With a slight restriction, if you're gonna grant this for their spokes to help them out to sell the place. Why can't we as a compromise have, have the thing go back to A one if, when the church is gone? And only keep one residence up there, not two?
Well, that's a possibility.
Is that feasible at all?
So that is a possibility, I believe. But you can't force whoever buys the house to have to buy that land from them when the church goes down, I mean.
But it does make a beautiful location and the view is right out to the road and opens everything up. I think the people would be somewhat conducive to liking that.
I mean, if I, if I was being the person that bought it, yes, I would probably once that church was gone. Buy the land right next to it, because yes, it would.
More property taxes.
It would make my property a lot nicer, you know, but you can't force.
I know that.
We can't put it in the ordinance to force somebody that wants the. Gonna butcher your name, I'm sorry. Decide that they no longer want it. You can't say what.
I appreciate your listening, thank you.
But yes, I think it could at some point go back to an A one.
If, if they were both owned by the same people?
Yes.
That would be hands down easy peasy.
I guess, again, it would come back and evaluated on a case by case basis, whatever it would be, I mean, if you wanted to put them together, if you wanted to include them, if the new owners. Like I said, I, I mean, I don't like it seeing sitting vacant, of course, and then we're certainly in need of housing in this county, but. I don't see a large issue, I mean, as far as deterioration of the church. Um, again, we have ordinances, uh, nuisance ordinances and whatever it may be, so if it gets to that point. Um, of course, something would be done, it's either done at their expense and we do it at their expense or they do it, you know, so.
I didn't know you had that ordinance.
Yeah, it certainly has to be maintained, so if there's a nuisance ordinance, uh, uh, levied on the property. It has to be maintained to a status of not being a nuisance, you know, for whatever reason it may be. So, uh, I guess with that being said, it's like. You know, they get a letter and it's, it's a formal process, of course, but then they either keep it to the point where it's not a nuisance. Or we go in, debate it, take care of the nuisance and they're charged for it, you know, so. Any other comments?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion to second, close the public hearing, um, on the valid rezoning, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried. Um, we're looking for a decision or the pleasure of the board for the rezoning of the property.
I would go ahead and make that motion to rezone the property to R one at this time.
A motion and a second to approve the rezoning of the property as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried. Um, now we have either the action to accept the rezoning and waive the second and third hearing.
So moved.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request and to waive the second and third public hearing as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried. Uh, we move on to, um, your discussion and action on resolving for proposed subdivision. I thank you all for coming and stating your opinion and purpose and, and appreciate everything you're doing. And good luck to you, young lady. Yeah, we can keep it on the line. So, we're at, uh, um, resolution to propose subdivision?
Yeah, at the same February zoning commission hearing. Troy Severding was also there as the property owner, um, he is the owner of T N. TNT, um, development, they are, they have a preliminary plan put together. Uh, for Sunset Ridge, which is a major subdivision north of Bellevue on Mount Creek, first thing. The, the northern Bellevue on Severding Ridge Road, it's just a mile north of Bellevue, it has went through the process with the city. Um, stating that. They have waived, waived any of their concerns. Um, the, one of the things with this resolution. Um, there's, we kind of talked about it before with our. Subdivision plan, having things in the preliminary process that are really more engineering type. Uh, things that you would normally do until after the concept of the, of the preliminary plot has been approved. And those, those are listed in the resolution, after talking to the. County Engineers Office, they have chosen to waive. Some of those, well, anything that has to do with engineering, water flow, um. Improvements, culvert strains, those type of items. To be finished, or have to be finished before the final plan is approved. So they've been, they've waived those for the preliminary approval, knowing that they would be part of the final plan approval. So we are just presenting this to see if you agree that this can move on from preliminary to. Be work on, to work on.
Um, I've seen the plat, I've seen the, I know the property, I'm familiar with it. I know the developers have, um. Have did substantial development around the Bellevue area in the last ten years. Uh, so I, I don't, I don't have any reservations against it now.
Any comments from the board? Uh, what is the plan on the board?
Motion that they are allowed to move forward with their.
Also good.
A motion and a second to approve the resolution proposed subdivision as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Uh, aye, opposed nay, motion carried. Thank you. That's, we might just drop that off.
And I'll just, real quick, because I know you're in a hurry, um, last night's commission meeting. Um, the commission has recommended approval for the Alden subdivision. Um, preliminary flat to move forward, and I'll present that resolution to you next week. And.
So did we, uh, the, the board, I assume, addressed any, um, drainage issues that were present there and?
And there's drainage issues that are, that are of concern, and the engineer's office is working with their engineer. On resolutions to, to get those, and that was part of the, uh, the stipulation that the.
That's, that's the only, um, feedback I received.
Yeah, and there's, it drops off to the east pretty quick, um, those last two lots, I mean, they're currently be great for walkout lots. Side walkouts, rear walkouts, that, you know, that's what they're gonna be good for, but that drainage, if not taken care of, because there's already drainage issues there.
And they already agreed to be on the water system, correct?
Correct. Correct, and then also, um, we have, oh shoot, should have, this will go next week too, then. That I'll be asking for, um. Um, for the ordinance to, to go to public hearing for the rezoning of the Rowling property. Um, Ryan Rowling, I presented to you guys back.
There was a small parcel left in there, he did not.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't get, we didn't notice that till after the public notice went out, because it was in two different names.
Again, know the area, visited the area, and I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, so we'll get, I'll ask for you guys to, um, get that on the public agenda, then we do the ten and twenty publication and get them here next.
Yep.
Next meeting.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you, guys, too.
Thank you, ladies. We will move right into Mr. Todd Kenny, our Jackson County engineer, is he available? Oh, stuck in it, somebody wake him up over there. Good morning.
Morning. Alright, uh. Interests policy and permit revision, uh, I emailed you guys a draft, I have copies, you can either. So.
You need to have this too, actually, so what was the?
The second one is the updated one where I added language to, to specifically talk about the width of the driveway request.
Okay, because I went back and forth and I didn't see much change.
So, item six is where it was added under new installation. So to address the permits themselves, which. Which were, really was no change to those, other than the, uh, the. The detail or the diagram went from the fifty foot max to seventy foot max, so that's the only change on the permitted, so. And then the language change was, um. So under new installation, the applicant shall physically stake out the location of the proposed entrance or scheduled to meet onsite secondary roads personnel. So the county representative can determine the following, one through six, item six, which was added, was to verify with request. Any entrance applications, new or modification, requesting a width greater than fifty feet. Wide shall be accompanied with documentation of anticipated semi truck traffic, so. To me, that's the way we would verify whether somebody needs one wider than fifty feet is. Why are you gonna have semi truck traffic and give me documentation for your anticipated truck traffic, is it a bend site, are you gonna have a business there or something? Do you own semis and you're gonna park them there? You, something to verify why you go to the wider than fifty feet, so we can have something on record to show why we granted an entrance that was, say, seventy feet wide, so.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in there I was concerned about, I thought it was ordered very well, so.
I changed some of the language in there, and I clarified, I would say, on the maintenance part, we are not doing any maintenance, period, so I took out some other stuff.
Have a, can I say that quickly?
Yeah.
One question. Right there, number three. The front feature. Any ditch requiring. To drainage, the culvert after installation by the county.
Yeah, so if you're gonna put in an entrance somewhere, and let's say there's a. Uh, a crossroad culvert nearby or something, the ditch is silted in, and they're gonna put in a driveway, we wouldn't want them to put in the driveway tube. In the silted ditch area, so the driveway tube sits up high, and then if we come back and clean the ditch down to where the crossroad culvert drains. Their driveway culvert now becomes a, you know, hydraulic complete, so we would clean the ditch ahead of time. So then they could build their driveway, put their driveway tubing at the depth it needs to be. So we need to do ditching before they put it in, that's what we, that's what that's there for.
Motion approved.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the entrance policy slash permit revision as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
You can just keep that on the second one. Yeah, okay. Uh, moving on to the. One, I always, I can't forget the press.
You got a big pile, Ken.
The five year road plan, so we held the public hearing February twenty third. Now I know we've gotten some significant discussion back and forth about potentially doing some improvements to certain roads, uh. I would suggest that we approve the five year plan as it was presented at that hearing, which doesn't include any road improvements. Uh, I have to have the five year, or the five year program into the DOT by April fifteenth. Uh, I don't see. It being very reasonable that we would take these petitions, get a review, do a secondary road assessment district. Get all this figured out, laid out before April fifteenth. So if that is the, if the board wants to move forward with those, then. Once the five year program is approved and something happens with petition, we create a secondary road assessment district. We can, it's easy to amend the five year program and end it after the fact, but we can't wait, we need to get this approved so I can get it. Sent into the DOT by April fifteenth, and then if, if something works out, you know, moving forward with a project. That we want to add to the, to the, to the five year program, we can just do that by amendment, so.
I certainly agree, I, I mean, I think it was a good plan, I, I certainly also agree with some of the, um. Issues or I, I guess for the petitions that has come up and are being discussed, so. I mean, I get we can address them going forward and, like you say, amend if we have to, so. Yeah, I would, I would totally agree with it.
Well, and I would like to see what our changing in our roads is gonna do to. Maybe help some of these places that have issues that are coming forward.
I sent the, the contractor an email, um, it's, it was, I was, I guess, delinquent in getting Lisa the. The invoice, because I was asking when we're gonna deliver, and he's like, well, it hasn't been paid yet, so, um. She has that now, I'm assuming we haven't cut a check yet, I don't know where we felt claims wise. Next week, so I sent him an email saying, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be cutting you a check, and then I wanted to set up a delivery date. Because I want to have, I'd like to have it here by May first, or later, so.
Motion for five year road plan.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve, uh, resolution for the five year road plan as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Uh, so the next one, uh. We set out for, uh, quotes, uh. Uh, for three bridges, um. We ended up, uh, deciding to go with, uh, materials letting or the piling. Beans that we don't have in inventory and all the plank needed for the bridges, so. When, when we have materials letting, that amount, dollar amount can be removed from the day labor threshold calculation. Uh, so then we were able to, we, we went through the process, remember, we requested three quotes on the three bridges, we knew the estimate was under a hundred and twenty thousand. The other ones were gonna be slightly over if the contractor provided all those materials. So we decided to have a letting for some, for all the materials for all six bridges, and now we've requested quotes on those other three to see if those quotes would come in a hundred and twenty thousand. That's what we're talking about today, so there's three quotes on the three other bridges, we're gonna do. Um, Twenty First Street, Two Way Street, and Four Hundred and Forty Sixth Avenue, all three of the quotes are less than a hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, so I'm just, I think what you guys have done before, you get the quotes in, you approve a by motion to award the quotes, that's what, that's what I'm asking for today.
And so when you let the material. So does the contractor do that, or as far as bid the material, does that come right from the supplier?
So it just depends, so like, uh, let's say a bridge con- contractor can bid the materials letting if he wants to. You have to have a bid security, so they have to submit a bid security with their bid, and they have to produce a performance bond. So we hold a performance bond till they deliver materials that are part of their, their bid, that, that, they have to enter into a contract, that's what the bid security is for. So we hold the bid security till they sign a contract, they sign a contract, we get a performance bond, we hold a performance bond till they deliver the materials.
So you're basically telling us this is normal procedure and you're recommending this.
Yes.
That was complex.
Yeah, uh. Yeah. This is, I've done this before for materials letting, um.
Well, it seems like a fair way.
It's a gray area, put it that way.
To bid the three extra bridges, it was coming in over a hundred and twenty thousand, so you bid the material for all six bridges that we were gonna do. And subtracted that from these three. Is, is the grand total with materials and everything under a hundred and twenty thousand?
No.
Okay.
But it's, but if you're full of money or? Right, so as long as you have a public letting, you can subtract that amount from the estimated, the threshold amount. So it's, you're just, there's a total project cost, but there's the bid threshold amount, as long as you have a letting for. A portion of that work, you can take that portion of work out, but you're not really supposed to split projects up, but this really isn't splitting it up, cuz we're doing. A materials letting and then having work being done.
Okay.
Or supply, we'll, we'll in the long run be supplying the materials for.
If you have a list of, are you just? We have no total of. You're saying.
I guess, what are you asking?
Yeah, right now, I'm looking, like, we don't have, we got three quotes from Demonstrator Construction for the three bridges, just like. So you have one quote for each bridge?
Yes, and that's what uh. We uh. We've actually submitted a request to another local contractor, so we've asked two local contractors within the county, this is the one quote we got back.
So the reason we're asking, we got no numbers, we got no nothing.
Yeah.
We approved the three day, three day labor already.
Right, so this is the other three that we were gonna have a full, a full bid letting for. But we ended up doing materials letting for all six, so the other three quotes that we actually got that were approved. Will actually go down because we're gonna, we're gonna buy the material as one for all the bridges under this letting.
Okay, so then what does that do to their bid? Do they come back and say? Uh this is our number now because we don't buy the materi- we're not buying the material. For the first three?
Yeah, should, okay, yeah, we'll get a revised quote for that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that makes sense that if we're gonna supply material, yeah.
Yeah, so like, uh let's say a bridge contractor bids the materials, he's gonna go to the, the vendor.
Sure.
And add his markup to it, right, so uh there's. Uh at least one plank vendor that we actually buy from annually. That we've checked with and said, yes, they will be able to get a bid in a performance bond and they will bid this project. Uh there's another steel supplier, the same thing, we bought piling from them and everything. Uh they're a contractor and they will bid this project, so we have viable bidders to do it, and anybody can bid it, I mean, anybody, if you can get bonded. Um get a bit security in the form spot and you can bid the project work. The materials.
Okay, motion approved.
So. Would you briefly, simply explain what the motion would cover?
Motion would be to approve the quotes received for uh VB two, two eight three eight. The proposal, bid proposal or quote proposal for OC three five six five bridge. And VB two eight eight seven.
And are we also approving the? To put the material off.
Not yet.
Okay. Alright, so that motion is made according to them three. Approving them three bits. The motion in a second, all in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carry.
Okay, uh the next one. Uh was contacted.
So you don't need a motion to, to put it out for a letting?
We'll get to that, okay, that's on the agenda, I'm sorry. You can have my copy. So this is a request uh from a property owner to. Put up that memorial sign. That I just handed to you. They've. Talked to the adjacent property owner about where the sign would go near that intersection. Although the, the side would go in the right way, it's not gonna be going on private property. And then I sent her this detail for a, a two post installation of a sign, a sign. That the posts would need to be breakaway, so they just needed, there's holes that you drill. Uh one right up above the ground line where it's gonna be, and then another one fourteen inches higher. So when somebody actually, if somebody ran out through and hit the sign, the sign would snap there and not come back through the windshield, so. This is the standard for wood structures to make that breakaway. So I guess. It's on the agenda for you to review and consider the request to put up this sign in the right way. That's just what I need you to decide.
Is there precedents or is there policy kind of regulating? What signs are put in the right way, cuz I don't wanna do this, and I understand perfectly why they wanna do it, to get it, but. That, does that open us up to, I wanna put a sign up, I wanna put a sign up, I wanna put a sign up. You know, do we have a policy for that?
My concern is in the right away. I, I see here that um they've obtained permission from a, a property owner. Uh so if it's, they have permission for the property owner to install it. Why won't they put it on the other side of the fence? That's not the right way.
Probably, I guess, for visibility, I guess, I don't know, I don't, I'm guessing this is probably gonna be a ways, ways away from the road. And this location, does it get kind of wooded there too?
Uh it, it, it falls off fairly quickly, so it's. Not like, I, I can't, I'll be honest with you, I'd have to revisit again, but I could. See that if they had permission from the property owner, it'd be just as visible on the other side of the fences, of course, I don't know if the fence is the. Uh right away.
Yeah.
I, I'd have to know how far the right away goes back from the, the roadway, I guess, the edge of the roadway. I, I, what I don't want, Todd, is. I mean, it's fairly large. And I guess I don't want a distraction to say. Uh we're supposed to be stopping here, and we certainly made efforts to do that with the rumble strips and the flashing stop sign. I, I don't want something else taking away from the effect of paying attention here.
Yeah, you see roadside memorials different places, but actually, it's like flowers and like a small site at a level.
They not seem like regular signs made to this highway, uh is memorial of da, 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 da.
Yeah.
For like troopers and different things like that, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
That's if the highway was named after.
I've seen signs that say this is.
Coming back, there's like whatever, a trooper.
Thing is named after.
Right.
The bridge is named after that trooper, this stretch of road is named after this war hero or whatever. But to just say. The person, you know.
Yeah, so there, uh to me, that, they're two different things, it's like if you're talking about trying to make. Uh the roadway or the intersection, you know, a memorial intersection, that's a totally different discussion, which I don't. I don't think that's really what this person is asking, she's just wanting to recognize. I think this location as a, a, like a memorialized location.
I, I, I know, I know the, the content of the purpose of it, I guess, I, I don't want liability, like you said. Coming back to us either, somebody else has the sign and comes back in the windshield that. Does damage or does inflict injury. So is this just up for discussion for review and then?
Yeah, I guess, I, it, I put it on here, uh cuz I wasn't gonna, you know, you know, grant permission, working right away, they were gonna do the work themselves. Um and I was just, I gave the, the detail for the instruct, installation to make it breakaway, I don't, maybe this is something you. You put to the county attorney and they review our liability and then see if, if we would be. See if our liability insurance would cover us for something like this and then.
Why not, not in favor of it? By them just saying that they're putting it between the fence and the roadway. That. I'm not happy with that. I could see like, maybe like one of the posts is on the. Property owner's side of the fence and maybe a post needs to stick over. Into the road right away a little bit. That. To me would be more favorable than just saying it's gonna be between the fence and the roadway because. You put that dab in the middle of where you would put a normal curb sign or whatever. I do feel that would be very distracted.
I guess, I think what you're trying to say is the right away, whether it be between here or there, but the right away, our right away, so. I, I would suggest that we get a little more information, I would actually like to talk to the landowner and. The individual that requested it to see um if there was. Um a resolution or, or, or a different.
Yeah.
Option, the way you're talking, I mean, the way it lays there then is that it either be here or back here. So it's not like it's sideways, it would, my, I suspect it would be.
Well, I don't, I just don't wanna set a precedence where, I understand the purpose of the sign. But is it any different than? You know, we just rezoned that. Building, you know, they wanna, we used to be a big shop and all that stuff, why won't my sign out a little farther? I got a little business out of my shop. I wanna sign out on the road so people can, what's the difference? So. I don't want our right aways, which would then clutter your guys' clean the ditches out, mowing all that stuff, more things to work around, I don't want it to get. Put it up with all this, I don't know what the precedence, I don't know what ordinances we have dictating what can go in the right way and. I get it. I don't know why you couldn't just put in a call fence post right there and put a sign on it. And be done.
Yeah. The, the, the issue of where it's in the right way is not as big a deal. Uh because wherever it is in the right way, we have liability. I don't care if it's a foot in off the fence or a foot in off the shoulder of the road, we have liability for that sign in our right away. So I get back to the point of, we need to, I think I, what I'm gonna do is, I'll reach out to Lori because I would need to check. We may have an ordinance that deals with placing sites in the right away, I think we probably do. I know we do in Clay County, and then the other thing is to see if our insurance, our liability insurance will cover us. For someone putting a sign in the right way.
Okay, so can you probably put the layer up there for the right way, see where the right way is on that corner? How far it measures? Yeah, so it, now can you do the measuring stick up there? It's uh that, yeah, there you go. Now, so if you go from center of road is thirty three normal, is that correct, Todd?
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks like that's what it is.
What you got there, thirty three, that's probably almost right to have that. I, I, I guess I would suggest that we table this until we get a little more input here, either from the county attorney or from our own observation and. Discussions.
I will second that.
Have a motion in a second to table action on the request for memorial sign, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay, motion carry. I, I, I don't know, I've talked to property owner and talked to the individual, I guess. I would guess it's straight ahead, I don't know. Have some discussions.
Just install the sign between the road and her fence, so that would, to me, would be within the right way.
I mean, i- if, if they're going to do that, I'm certainly think that that property owner would be more than. Willing to let him clean that brush out.
So you can see the fence line, and the fence lines are not a big gap, not a big area between the double arrow and the fence line, so. If she put it right at the fence line on her pro- on this other lady's property, I think it'd be, it wouldn't be that much farther away than.
Absolutely not, you know, when it's still highly, it'd be high enough, it'd be visible, yeah.
That's three oh eight, what intersection?
Three ninety fifth.
That's a real good to the goal, of course.
Okay. Well, I guess. Should I reach out to her and just say, hey? We need to do a lot more. Checking to see if this is.
Liability.
Liability wise, and then to say, would you be willing to just put it at the fence line on private property? Cuz if she says, yeah, I'll just do that, it just saves a lot of time.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Okay. Um alright, um. Set date and time uh for the hearing for approval of the material bidding document. Uh I think that's what uh supervisor says it started out. So where is my answer on this? So we need to do four and twenty of this. So we're talking about a hearing, we need a hearing on A, A or April fourth board meeting.
Uh we talk in nine AM.
Whatever you want it. Nine AM works for me, so move.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to set the public hearing date for April fourth at nine AM. For the bridge material bidding documents as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. Motion carry.
Okay.
Thank you for the updates and uh information. Any other further update?
Uh real quick, uh I mentioned this before, but uh. April fifth, eight PM, uh Jackson County Farm Bureau meeting, I'll be talking to them, and I reached out to them to see is exactly, you know, what. What they would like me to present on. I, you know, like when I meet with Clay County, usually talk about upcoming maintenance and construction projects and then. Probably do that, and then also touch a little bit about our plan for. Uh you know, the gravel road, uh drainage improvements and free rocking program. So I'll find out what, yeah, that's really what they wanna talk about, and then. We, we did the motivator operator vacancy interviews from a coconut on Friday. So we'll be going through that process to uh uh. You know, select the, the person we wanna make an offer to and then do all the pre-employment checks and that kind of thing, so hopefully that. That occurs this week, so we're along with that as well.
Eight PM for the farm bill meeting, correct?
Yep.
Okay, like that meeting's better, Kirk.
It's gonna get late, I might have to have supper in the morning.
Question for you. And I don't know. I had several reports of farmers going out and fixing roads. Making roads worse. Even though they thought they were making them better. Is there anything? I mean, one, this isn't a precedence with mine going forward, is there anything? We can do on that?
Well, besides enforcement. I mean, technically, they, you can't work in the right way without a right away permit, so they'd be. You'd be in violation of the permit requirement to work in the right way.
I mean, if they're doing these things, then it's costing us more money because now we're having to go back and fix things.
Yeah, the problem is that you'd have, they, you would have to catch them, like law enforcement would have to catch them, somebody reporting them is not something we could take action. So they'd actually be, have to be physically. Caught by law enforcement doing something.
A city, a citizen's video or snap or?
Well, even then, you'd have to, you'd have to get an ID on the license one of them. Because you'd have to be able to positively identify the lines, yeah. Uh I mean, even like for, I, when I was gonna talk to our guys about the road employees, if they see something like that, then they need to call it into like. To the law center and say, hey. Somebody's out here, cuz you can, we can warn them all they want, but it's. Takes a little bit more effect when, when the sheriff's deputy comes out and talks to somebody, but technically, if you're gonna try and. Effectively stop them, it has to be an enforcement issue.
But there is something, so they can't do that.
Yeah, so, yeah, technically, they're not allowed to do that because number one.
Right.
They're not an employee of the maintenance department, and to do work in the right way, they need permit.
Right, well, and I'm just kind of afraid that we're gonna start doing this and getting our. Crown in the road and that, and then you get. Buddy thinking they're helping.
Well, plus, you know, we're gonna start hauling a lot of rock on the roads when we do this and. And I've read it just before, you know, people use, start harvesting rock off the road, you know, uh. For their driveways and yard, so that's the biggest thing I see is. People go out there and start scheming rock off the road, but.
Right. Street talk, street talk said they can't do that anymore, but there ain't no rock on the road. Appreciate it, thanks, Todd. Didn't realize we were that far behind. So we will, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the Max Property Tax Resolution. Um we have um the proposed budget in front of us, which. Lisa, like to enlighten us a little bit or explain?
Kelly is here, if you wanna come forward.
Shall we, yeah, Lisa?
So I can tell you, and you all know that we've spent quite a bit of time in this year's budget. And because of the. The legislation, of course, we're just a little bit behind, so we kinda did the reset here a couple of weeks ago. And we're at this point today to start the process of getting the budget finalized. Today is the property tax, the maximum property tax. Uh let me discussion, uh public hearing, so. Uh, levy discussion, uh, public hearing, so shall we, you wanna?
This hearing, all this hearing does is. Um, set the maximum of the tax dollars that we are allowed to. To let, that we will levy, we cannot go above it, we can go, we can cut it, but we can't go above it. Um, it is. A three point five, three percent increase between the general and the supplemental levy. And, uh, rural services is eleven point six three percent.
Because you said yesterday, that is the eleven minus the three, so eight point.
Yeah, and then I, it is eight point.
So I've got, let's go back over then, yeah.
So the total.
What I've got is the maximum property tax dollars in the general county services represent an increase of three point five, three percent. And the rural county services, an increase of eight point three. That's what we discussed yesterday.
Did you? The eight point one is the rural.
Just the rural.
And then the eleven point six three is the countywide, which would be the general.
And that's three five three plus the eight point.
Yes, yes.
And it amounts to.
Forty-four point nine. I have to get my fingertips now and reorganize my file and now. I believe it's forty-four point. Eight percent. Well, probably, but she's like in the same boat I am, she reorganized. Forty-four, cause it was higher than, it was forty-four point seven cents, seven cents. Cause it was higher than what we were wanting, but because of. Um.
Fun balance.
Fun balance in the, in the revaluation.
From the legislation.
Yes. Um. It increased to keep the, the dollars the same. It, it both that set up.
So basically, the, it's between forty-four and a half and forty-five cents, so, uh.
Yes.
And it is directly related to. The change in legislation on the rollback, and it's also directly related to the rural service fund. Uh, for the fact that we actually put three hundred and fifty thousand extra. Repair and restructure.
Yeah, and it's also. Salaries and insurance, and a large part of it was insurance.
Again, yeah, uh, the increase was es- still an estimate, is that correct?
That's far, yes. Uh, Becky was gone, and I don't know that she got information from them.
We're real close, and, and our insurance. Certainly has played a role at in the last several years with. Even our personal budgets. So. That is where we're at with the, uh, max tax resolution.
I have not received any comments. Proposal the last meeting, so.
I have received none.
I have not either. Actually, I had people telling us to what you gotta do to get your.
Uh, public hearing on the product, matter of property tax resolution.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the. Property tax resolutions. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
So with that being said, I need you to approve, I need a motion to approve resolution number nine forty-eight dash zero three dash twenty-one dash twenty-two three. For the maximum property tax resolution for general county services or rural county service for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. I will make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nine four eight dash zero three dash two one dash twenty-two three. As presented for the maximum tax, property tax resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
And I think while we're at it with my justice will, I also need a motion to set the date and approve the publication. For April eleventh, twenty-two-three at ten AM for the budget hearing for the proposed FY twenty-two-four budget.
I will second that.
A motion and a second to approve the. Date and approve our publication for. April eleventh to be the public hearing date for the proposed twenty-four budget. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried. Thank you all for your dedication and hard work.
But the challenge in here.
Well, to do it two to three times again, it's, it's challenging to begin with. Um, when, and I'm gonna say it again. Uh, the inflation rate is, was eight point seven or eight point nine, something to that effect. And if we can stay within the three to four percent inflation, we worked at it anyway, so. Again, legislation didn't help us, but, uh, that's the way it rolls out.
And it's only gonna get worse.
We will.
We wait to see the future brings.
Mr. Fingers.
Changes in legislation. The educational learning curve of. We appreciate it, you guys do.
I appreciate all of the, uh, open, open mind business.
Well, there were a lot of good discussion and lots of input, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So to finish out my agenda today, I also need a motion to approve the minutes of the March fourteenth, twenty-two-three board proceedings as written by auditor's end. And authorize publication, the official new favorite. I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, approve the minutes of the March fourteenth. Twenty-two-three board proceedings as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices to Midwest Construction Consultants for six thousand two hundred and eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Crawford Company for thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. FS Precast Company Inc. for forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. KD Platform Inc. for five thousand four hundred dollars for a total cost of seventy-four thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. And authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension. The four H Outreach Center for the month ending February twenty-eighth, twenty-two-three.
So moved.
I will second that.
I was a little hesitant because of the advanced PK company and a few that in there, but they are delivering most today, so.
Hey, and I don't know if that's, is that a, is that a prepayment for the out, or for the extension office?
Yes.
So, um, I have a motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried. And.
That's all that I got for the board today.
Alright, Lisa, so that covers your whole portion, correct? I'm gonna jump backwards just a little bit, could we open the public hearing? Are there any? Visor, visitors or citizens that would like to address the board? Seeing our hearing done, we will move on to, um. Get a public hearing? We will jump down to Jack. Is Lynn coming to Jack?
Um, Lynn's coming.
Okay, so at this time, we'll take a, well. Uh, Luann, are you available?
I emailed him, so I'll check my email when I get back. He requested it. We talked about the time, so. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Calendar this week. Um, this morning at nine thirty, there's the coconut Betterment Corporation and Compton County meeting.
What the hell that one?
They always schedule that for nine thirty on Tuesday morning, so. At five o'clock tonight is the conservation board meeting in Hurstville, for any of you that wanna watch that.
Oh, that's right.
He, he's abandoning us, so.
That'd be awesome, cause I think it'd be just some discussion there.
At six o'clock tonight is the Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting at the McCopada. Library or on Zoom, and usually that would be done, but again, you're not gonna be there. Yeah, I told you, you might not be available tonight, so. And, um, at seven o'clock tonight is the Board of Health meeting that for NIN. I think it might be six o'clock on your pages there, but I did double check with Elizabeth and it says seven.
It says seven. So the conservation board is not zoomable, is that correct? There's not a Zoom setup for that.
Not usually. Um, I, they attach the agenda or the packet to the. Um. Calendar. But they don't usually do Zoom meetings, it's the easiest thing for them to do, so. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March twenty-second. At nine AM is an IRS meeting, um, in Dubuque for NIN, or by, they usually do that with my Zoom if you want. At noon tomorrow is the Summit Carbon Solutions webinar, Fact Versus Fiction. That's by Zoom for any of you that wanna do that, and I find NIN, I registered NIN for that. Two o'clock tomorrow. Um, I have on your calendar that is the Welcome Center closing, but that's actually gonna be on Thursday at two o'clock in Preston. And I believe Mike was gonna be the only one probably available for that. Five o'clock tomorrow night is ECIA's council meeting. In Dubuque or by Zoom, um, that we for, for Mike. Thursday, March twenty-third at nine AM is an RPA meeting in Dubuque. Um, that'll be just for NIN this time, unless Don wants to zoom in. Um, and like I said, at two o'clock will be the, this closing on the Welcome Center. Friday, March twenty-fourth at eleven AM is a weekly Isaac's legislative update meeting by Zoom for Mike. Monday, March twenty-seventh at four o'clock is the early childhood Iowa Council meeting in Dubuque for NIN. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty-eighth at nine AM.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Um. No, I think a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, I see Larry is here, so we're, uh, Buck is here and, uh. Our Jackson County Assessor has a departmental update. Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to make you aware that we kinda talked about our conference board meeting. That values were, uh. Obviously going up. Um, trying to be proactive to get the public to. Um, be aware that this, that these, when these assessments come up. Go out. They're gonna be a lot, you know, they're gonna be pretty high, it'll be. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven percent on the average. Um. So, we decided to put a article in the paper. Uh, saying what, what's going on, and then also on the assessment rolls is the second sheet. That will go out in each assessment roll. So I just wanted to, before you see in the paper. So you just have a copy of it.
Well, we sure appreciate that. I don't know what that's gonna do as far as the public, I'm sure they're gonna have their own perception.
Yeah, any questions?
If anybody have a chance to read this month's, is, there is five or six really good articles.
I had my staff read them because they were really good.
They were really good, and they explained the whole process.
So we have made, um, some copies of different things. Codes and things that we have, that we're gonna have like on bulletin board, we're gonna have some things set up on the counter. Uh, and we're going to, uh. Make sure we have some answers when people come in and why. Sure, we're doing what we're doing. Yeah, it's just.
I mean, that again, um. So they understand that the assessment doesn't actually mean that your taxes are going to explode.
That's right.
So they have to understand the process and, and, and the budget process. And how it's evaluated and why it's evaluated, of course, there's, there's laws and regulations that you have to follow, so.
Yeah.
Um, uh, everyone knows that the last. Two or three years did to residential properties, uh, farmland. We've certainly have seen it, you're blind if you have not noticed. But, uh, things, you know, seem to be leveling off and maybe regressing a little bit. I, I can't say that, but it's still very active.
Active, we, we, uh, those are some weird points. We, uh, watch obviously every Friday, go through every sale that happened in Jackson County. With, they're just starting to maybe level off. Yeah, I would, being on the market a little longer, uh. Maybe, but, you know, leveling off means, hey, they're way up here leveling off, you know, we did, they didn't level off and come back down. To where they were. But, you know, this is twenty-two-three. Our next, uh, revow will be in twenty-two-five. And I want the people to know that if it goes the other direction. We use the same system, it'll go down that much, you know, but. We don't know what that's gonna be, and there's also, um, uh, assessed valuation. Assessment limitation on the valuation, this can be taxable, and, uh, so. No matter what we do, the state is, will decide what the rollback's going to be. Um, and the other thing is, and I know for the public, if we don't do this ourselves. They will do it in the fall with an equalization order, so we can either do it correctly. Hopefully we won't get an equalization order, or it's gonna happen anyway.
So, I mean, we certainly wanna abide by the rules, we have to abide by the law and the rules, so I guess again, we're gonna ask the public to be patient. And with any questions, certainly bring them forward.
Sure.
And there's information available, and I sure appreciate if you did take some copies of some of them articles was. You know, and I kinda, I kinda didn't know the process, but it was really explained really well.
Couple of them letters that were really good to get to the point of what's.
How it's, how it's done, yeah, so.
And we're gonna have some of the, some of this stuff available for, uh, the public, if they come in our office. Uh, they'll be able to grab it, you know, if they come in and they wanna review their property, you know, and, um. Normally that's the case, but this year we're gonna have more information available.
Yeah, but it certainly stands to reason that. I mean, here, anybody that's in the building knows what's, knows what's happening, and, you know, I mean.
We've been preparing people as we're out there. Because, you know, you'd be out there, you'd be looking at something and they'll say, do you know what my neighbor's house sold for? When they say that, and if they're shocked, I say, you know, that reflects on your value also. You know, if your neighbor's house is, it sells for a lot more than what you ever thought it should. It still goes into the, the vast. Uh, value, so we have to mass appraisals, how we do it, everything gets looked at. Different cities, there's different townships, there's different map areas, so it isn't like everybody's the same. That's why this percent what we go up. As a whole, doesn't really say the whole. Because some places aren't gonna go up as much, and some places are gonna go up a lot more.
Absolutely not, and again, I wanna stress the fact that if the assessed value goes up twenty-five percent. Does not indicate that your taxes are gonna go twenty-five.
Thank you saying that, because that's what people are doing.
That's it, that's.
Just isn't, it isn't true. You know, you guys are gonna come in here and do your job. Come up with the dollars you need, the school district will do their job, come up with the money they need, that's what, that's what'll affect.
That's what drives this.
That's, and I appreciate you bringing that, because a lot of people, they don't know if it, if they wanna think it starts in the professor's office at this time of year. Then they move over and they wanna say it's the auditor's fault, and then when they pay their bill, it's always the treasurer's fault, you know, and, and. That's not the way it is, and you know that, most, most of us all know it, cause we live it every day. But not everybody knows it, you know, I have to confess, before I got into this office. I didn't know a lot of that stuff out, working either, but. I still kinda chuckle when someone thinks the auditor and the assessor are the same. Do the same job, it's, it's really different, but.
So then, and there's really fairly good breakdown on your tax assessment, if you take time to read them.
We're going to have a pie graph to that of our own property, so they can look and say, hey, this is how it's broke down. So they can see.
And I think most people are being a little more vigilant, apart as reviewing them and they have questions.
And there's a lot of stuff on Beacon Schneider, uh. People are getting more and more, uh. Used to you going to the computer for information, maybe not my mom and dad, but a lot of other people are.
Well, it surprised you though, you know, I, I was out socializing Sunday, and, uh, we were talking about it, and this guy next to me just pulled it up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's on everybody's phone, and. And that's good for your office also.
Right, so those, uh, assessment rolls will go out at the end of the month.
They'll have them probably the last couple of days in March, after I'm by April first, so. Again, there is a contested period, right? So we mentioned that, if you wanna contest it, you're certainly welcome to contest it, but there is a period to do that.
Yeah, and it's, it'll be right with your assessment. Uh, letter. That would be the second one. It'll tell in there how you can, uh, there's an informal review. Uh, and then there's a, a border review. And it tells all, it gives numbers, it gives dates, uh, you could have a board, uh, informal review, that would be with, with, uh, me. You can do that up until April twenty-fifth. If you want to appeal, if we don't agree on whatever, then you can appeal to the board review. That needs to be done between April second and April thirtieth, so there is a way to, to feel it, you know. When we want to talk to you, if you got a question, we want to, we want to have a chance to explain.
Certainly. Appreciate the update. Yeah.
Questions, people versus just. Get educated.
Get educated before you get irate would be, would be nice, yeah.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, they're certainly welcome to come in here and get educated, but.
Appreciate what you guys can do for us, just like what I do for you guys, and examples being these fun gravel roads this year. Because of the way the frost went in the ground. Now, not everybody understands. I don't know, I don't think that was, I might have a couple of people when I was out in the field asking questions, but. I understand it real well, I know what happened because the same out at my farm, frost went in in first December, then it come out about eight inches. Kind of stayed there all, and it just like, yeah, it was, it was. But I tried to explain to people that, I appreciate you guys explaining what we do in our office, I know he's got a lot on your plate also, so.
Thanks, Buck.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're actually right back on schedule. And we are joined by Jack Willie and Lynn Boops, our Jackson County Disability Coordinator Disability Sheriff.
Good morning.
Morning.
So we are here again, followed the monthly region, mental health regions governing board meeting. I participated in virtually, Jack was there in person, so he caught a little bit more of it because it. We got kicked out. Got back in, no? Oh, you couldn't get back in. Well, it was just.
She was afraid of you.
Did that one?
Yeah.
Um, so I will update some of it and Jack can add in, or Jack, you can start, I don't care which way we go.
I'll add in.
Okay.
But I do want to say before we start, uh, after I had a meeting in the morning at nine, and after the meeting, I broke down by detail and the first panel was up. At our, at our Together We Build meeting last night, they, Jeremy said that the panels were going to start going up today, so I thought. I'm going to drive by and see if it's actually true.
Well, there was a lot of activity down there this morning when I could buy about eight thirty, so there was panels being. A lot of people standing around there.
The big crane was there and they were. Wonderful.
Progress.
Provision, anyway.
Yeah. So in the world of mental health, um, David, or not David, he wasn't able to be there yesterday as a fiscal agent, but Lori presented the financials currently through February of twenty twenty-three. Um, you know, the key number that we're kind of looking at is what is our projected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year? State law says it should be at twenty percent, the projection currently is at fifty-nine percent. In order to try and address that, uh, there was quite a conversation and I missed a, um. Budget work session, I think that some of this was probably covered in more detail, but, um, Lori did propose. One-time funding opportunities to be spent before the end of this fiscal year in the amount of seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So that will help considerably. Some of those areas are, there's a grassroots effort, you might have seen advertisements on the Quad City TV stations called Gray Matters. A kind of grassroots effort to, um, encourage high school and college age target audience to recognize that. Mental health is nothing to be ashamed of, um, there's help out there and just need to, to seek out the help. And I think it's, uh, been a pretty successful campaign. It was started by, I believe, an Augustana college student, if I remember correctly.
Hearing the TBA was there yesterday.
You know, I seen the ads on one of the basketball games, the NCAA basketball game, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the young gal from St. Ambrose is doing the ad, does a really good job.
Yeah, yeah, uh, they're looking at doing a, uh, universal screening for early childhood and. There is a request for thirty-seven thousand dollars to help fund that, the children's care, um. Early childhood care coordinator that's funded by the region, employed by Lutheran Services will be instrumental in working with that. Challenge, change, we've heard a little bit about, that's the, um, emotional learning program, the yoga program that are in the schools. International Trauma Center does training on trauma-informed care, which you're hearing a lot more about in the last several years. The significance of childhood experiences and the trauma that that creates for them as they develop emotionally. The region's website, website is going to be updated, uh, Humility Homes is a homeless shelter in the Quad Cities.
Can we go back to the, to the website?
That's what I missed, yeah.
During the TBA, talked a great deal about that, and it's going to be very user-friendly. And there's going to be lots and lots and lots of information on it. And there will be videos that you can click onto and it'll explain that particular item. And how it's, how you can access it, um, but it really sounds like once it's done, it's really going to. Be a, a great promotional, um, piece for the mental health area. Really going to share a lot of very, very important information.
The more, what we have found is, our website was established probably about four years ago, and since then, with the. Um, expansion of the crisis program, we're seeing a lot more usage of it, so. Having to be more interactive and, and informative, worth the expense. Humility Homes and Services is in the Quad Cities, they needed some funding, the remainder of this fiscal year for some apartments, is what I understood. To continue that program, Muscatine has a program called MCSA, I can't quite remember what the initials stand for, but it's their homeless shelter. And they will be getting some funding to do some peer respite beds, and so they will have a similar program to what Todd Noack has at Life Connections in DuWitt. So that it's a little bit more geographically accessible to that portion of that area of the region. Life Connections out of DuWitt, uh, Todd does a lot of training for a program called RAP. Uh, development of a Wellness Recovery Action Plan for people that. Need to develop a plan on how to respond to their own, um, circumstances when they're feeling a crisis. He's done a lot of training and he is doing some, um, refunding some additional training for facilitators to be available. Muscatine County Jail put a request in to purchase four, I think it was, suicide mattresses. They were telling the story about how currently individuals who are in suicide watch in their jail are just, um, given a, a smock. Which, um, constricts their arms and they lay on the cement, is what I understood.
Just not a pad.
Down. The biggest one was Genesis Emergency Department out of the Quad Cities, you may be aware that Genesis, uh. Went down to one primary emergency room at Genesis East in the Quad Cities in Davenport. Genesis West is where the inpatient psychiatric unit is, and they have had interest prior to this to develop basically a psychiatric emergency room. Where individuals would have access to go and the staff that would staff it would be, would be specifically trained in mental health. Sounds like their staffing would include three advanced practitioners, could be nurse practitioners and then a social worker. And they would be equipped to screen both medical and psychiatric emergencies. Uh, they would not do routine medical emergencies, they still would like all those individuals to go to Genesis East, but. Uh, it's a kind of an up and coming idea that is around the country and it has a lot of merit to it. The person that's in crisis goes to that ED and right away they're able to be evaluated by somebody with training specifically in that area. And if they need an inpatient stay, hopefully there's a bed available right upstairs, so to speak, in that same facility, so.
And during the presentation that the two representatives from Genesis, um, gave. They said that, because last year they've served three, three thousand five hundred and sixty-four people. And they said that the worst part was sometimes the wait time is up to eight hours. And, um, as Lynn said, they're hiring three advanced practice professionals. And the primary site will be for acute care, mental health services. Um, uh, really sounded wonderful. And Lori was going over all of this stuff, and I said to her, I said, Lori, I don't do shorthand. And so I did ask her if they would prepare some kind of, uh, a, a handout. That kind of gave us the rationale for wanting to do this, and then what Genesis would provide. And so she's going to do that so that we can share it with the boards of supervisors, so they know what's available and what. Will be provided in Genesis, and she said she would try to do that as soon as possible.
Yeah, um, one of the unique things about this is the way it's funded, and I say that because typically. Especially now with the state's oversight, it being state dollars, state likes any funding to be attached to individuals. Not to be given, not for a provider to be giving a block of money and say, here's your money to use to provide this service, but rather. Here's the money that we will pay per person or per unit of service when somebody receives services. However, the nature of this kind of program, it is going to be quarterly payments. Um, looks like the first quarterly payment's a hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. And while we will get numbers of people back, we will get data back from this emergency department. We won't necessarily take that dollar amount and assign it to all the individual people that have been there. It's considered a block grant to make sure that it covers all the overhead costs that are being to be covered. Lori, um, has had conversations with Iowa Health and Human Services and they're okay. With this method of funding for this kind of service.
And they were really extremely. Complimentary that we were moving in this direction from the Department of Services, because it's certainly is needed.
Well, I can see it being a big asset, because if they can get in to talk to somebody, be seen, have somebody. Understand their situation, if I take a situation that's here that could escalate very quickly. And keep it down here or get them back under control, so it sounds like a very good.
Yeah, if you're going to, if you're going to weigh in hours, that could be an eternity or a fifteen.
That scares me.
Yeah, that can easily exacerbate any crisis, whether it's physical or mental health crisis. As you said, an emergency room.
It might determine whether they can care enough, because if it's eight hours, they might just leave.
Oh, absolutely, right.
Or other alternatives.
Right. I, I did ask, um, the, two people from Genesis if. They were concerned about getting the staff they're going to need. And they said, they're somewhat concerned, but they do have a couple of interviews coming up with some very qualified individuals, and. They're hoping that that will. Build a gap that they have right now.
I certainly like the, still like the idea of the screening process, you know, for adolescents or whatever it may be, but again, to sustain something. Uh, I, I, I can hear the legislation too, when you read about it and say, well, we wanted a ten percent carryover and basically it goes to five. It's hard to argue when they have a, when you have a sixty-three million dollar surplus in, in that, and it. Yeah, but again, it's, you just don't want to go out there and spend money to spend money, let's do so. Hopefully they can see the fact that we need to take your time with this, there's funds available, let's do it right, you know.
Yeah, these partnerships, you know, in this program development, it has to be well thought out in order for it to be successful and sustainable, so.
And I know there, there was quite a, quite a few questions yesterday about, can we really afford this and what are we going to do if it. You know, if it takes what we have as reserve, and there is a, a special fund that's been created because all of the counties that were over. Had to send money back to the state, and they created a fund so that you can apply to get money from that fund to, to.
So it will stay in the, in the system, I want to call it.
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not just going to go back to the state for them to do whatever they want, it will stay to provide services to those people that need it.
That sounds like a positive, yeah, I mean, to know that it would be available on a certain case-by-case basis also, you know.
Yeah, and regions will be able to apply for funding.
And I know that Lori said when she got that ready, she would send it to the counties for the supervisors and, uh, to the board members.
So that is one of the ways that, uh, we're hoping to reduce some of our fund balance before the end of this fiscal year. To your point, Mike, about the fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, you know, there's been conversation the last couple of years. That figure currently is five percent, and there was some discussion about it needed to be increased, maybe ten percent, maybe somewhere under twenty percent. Lot of conversation, I think, among the boards of supervisors, if I understood correctly as well. It does sound like, from what I understood from Lori yesterday legislatively, they will not be touching that, they will leave that at five percent. Partially because of all the money that the region still has sitting, um, you know, on the books, so to speak.
That's basically what Isaac told us about it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, um, you know, to that point, one of those expensive services that we're required to have and we do not have in our region. Nor does the region to the east of us or west of us have, is the intensive residential services homes or earth homes. We just had a meeting yesterday in Iowa City with the East Central Region, which is the whole Dubuque, Cedar Rapids. Iowa City and then six other counties and our region, uh, we met with three providers came. And we talked to them about what can we do to incentivize providers to establish at least one group home within our two regions. Um, to do that, that's an expensive service. Uh, there's a reason why providers are not really jumping at, at the opportunity to provide it, because it does come with some risks. It's a difficult, it's probably the most difficult population to serve in the community. And so providers and workforce is clearly a factor in their consideration, whether or not they would apply, but. That's an example of why some money doesn't get spent, and yet there's services out there we need, um, we just haven't been able to. Get them available at this point.
And a lot of, a lot of the reasons that we have so much carryover is too, we've, we've implemented some services that aren't available. Because they can't get the staff to provide them. And that's, um, you know, really heartbreaking, because you get all the background done and everything, but then the providers of those services. Can't hire anybody.
Uh, the board also approved yesterday, uh, renewal of the contract with Caroche Compliance. They also, just as Jackson County, they are the, are, um. Hip of compliance.
Caroche, little, little webinars that we got to attend to keep them compliant, yeah.
Yes, and they talked about that yesterday, they, they gave us the data on where the region is at with the. Necessary people to do their trainings, and you have to be above that threshold of eighty percent in order for them to have confidence. That they can support us and defend us, should there be a breach of any sort, and currently the region is at about seventy-four percent. But the deadline for doing the most recent training is not passed yet, so.
So I will say that their online training and these, these things that they come out with for us to go through have. Been a lot more user-friendly than they were previously. And Jack had some trouble with them usually previously, but they've been a little.
Well, of course, now, uh, I, Julie's kind of the, the coordinator of services for Cedar County is kind of. The overseer with it and works with them, and I said to her, uh, two months ago, I gave her my new email address. And she says, well, I'll get it to Caroche. And so yesterday, I, last month, I said to her, you know, I still haven't gotten anything from Caroche. She says, well, I'll talk to him, I said to her, yesterday, I still haven't gotten anything from Caroche. So I'm one of them that's guilty, because you can't do it if you don't get it.
Right, yeah. Uh, the board did two other approvals yesterday, one was to enter into. Um, then I had an agreement for fiscal year twenty-four with Robert Young Center to continue to coordinate our region's crisis system. The dollar amount of that is eleven million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. That, of course, is a part of the FY twenty-four budget that the board approved yesterday, which is seventeen million, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. So. Those were the highlights that I recall. Yep, yep. Revenue next year from the state looks like the region should get eleven million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And then the rest of that amount that's in our budget is the carryover that we anticipate we'll have at the end of half twenty-three. Any questions?
No, I, I guess I just wanted to say that, uh, uh, just. Tabletop discussions and such at our ISA. Um, meetings were. That our region is on a real positive note with them, that, uh, you're active and how we're organized and how they move forward is. Has been noted.
Well, and I think I, maybe I mentioned this last time, but Lori kind of seems, seems to think that. Our region will stay as it is, because there was talk about. Minimizing the number of regions, but she thought since we were over three hundred thousand, um, population and. With the amount of our budget and everything that, and we have five counties that we should be okay, and I hope we are.
Well, that's always good to hear, Mike, cause you never quite know, and especially now with the state being in control of the money. And having obviously a lot more oversight and saying what goes on. Um, I think our crisis system that's developed, and it's still developing, and it will always be in a developing stage. Is one of the things that has caught the attention, and I'd like to give kudos on to our law enforcement in the county, because they continue to embrace the opportunity to take advantage of. Some high-quality training, um, you know, we operated here in McCokata, but, uh, there were. A number of people from law enforcement in the county that attended the one just last week. The forty-hour training in Clinton, and there will be one coming up in Muscatine, so, um, the other thing that we're seeing is, you know. We're, it, we're becoming a little more, um, collaborative, I would say, in terms of what we're doing. Last week, Renell Clark held a meeting at, at HACAF with law enforcement, talking to them about what. She has available in terms of emergency response services through Salvation Army, since she manages those funds. You know, the more time we all get together and spend time together trying to help everybody, that's just better for the community, and a lot, some of that is. The result of the crisis system becoming more readily available and offering what people need, so.
And the crisis, um, 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 can't think of her name.
Oh, Jen.
Yeah, yes, there's a training today.
Oh, yeah.
At the fire station for firemen and, and law enforcement, and, and she said that it was going to be over at the fire station. And it was, I don't, she didn't say how many were. She said that they've been very responsive, um, all, all over the region of people attending those training sessions.
Yeah.
But she said there was one today in, in McCokata.
Well, I think, uh, we all have to recognize it's here to stay, uh, we, we better get accustomed to it and get trained to it, how to. How to handle it, and if we can, you know, in a responsible manner. No, like I said, Lynn, I've heard good things about our region and. How it's structured and how they respond and are active, you know, active in the process, so.
And I know you've all met, uh, uh. Christian?
Girl Christine.
Christine, um, a week ago, yesterday. There was a, a two-day seminar, um, down in Davenport, at Rhythm City, but it was in the meeting area. Um, but it was a, a full two days of, and there was law enforcement, there was the court system, there were early childhood Iowa. Boards of Supervisor members and mental health, um, government board members. And, uh, she conducted it and it was fabulous. And, um, it was full two days and we broke up into different groups and. We had all kinds of questions that we were supposed to respond to, what was the most important, what, you know, what. What you really needed to delve into, and, um, there was, I would say, over a hundred there, easily. But, um, it was a really, really, really good session, and she just, I don't know how she did it.
Yeah.
Cause she was, she was everywhere at the same time, and it was really a good, good session.
Yeah, she really is an asset to the region. Especially, and they're getting a lot, children's services are getting a lot of attention, so.
We're good.
Thanks.
Well, we sure appreciate you, uh, you two staying active and being a part of it, and, uh, what you're too spent for, then where it needs to be, so.
Good, thanks. The main thing is, we wanna do what's best for the people that need their services, and we wanna be able to provide those services. And we're very fortunate to have this caliber here.
Now, that congratulations on being selected to that new Health and Human Services Committee at our state level, correct?
Uh, it's a reappointment.
Rudy was, yeah, he's been doing that for a while.
Oh, no, I thought it was a combination where they give, what they provided, it was two.
Well, we're trying to figure. Last, the last, I'd say the last six months, we've been working on the merger. And, and what the composition of the board will be. Because it's the Health and Human Services, and their board has been much larger than ours. So we're still looking at the number of people that will serve and in what capacity, so. Um, actually, I didn't know I was reappointed until I saw. And somebody said, well, they probably haven't notified you yet because it hasn't, you haven't been confirmed by the Senate, and so that could be why, but. Marilyn was reading the paper and she said, uh. Your name's in the paper, I said, so I didn't do, I didn't commit a crime. She said, no, you got reappointed to the, uh, Human Service. And, um, I said, what? I usually get a letter or a note from the governor's office, but that hasn't happened yet. And then somebody says, well, maybe you have to wait for the Senate, so, anyway.
All right, so we're down to get to the degree, any boards or commission reports? Um, the legislative did not meet on Friday, they canceled it. I'm sure you got all the updates from last Friday from the, at the House. Some of the bills that were going to, they mean there's EMA compensation board stuff. Many options on the table yet, so. Getting to see where we're coming.
Their lines don't blow up last week, and right now they're just kind of trying to finalize their budget with making sure they're getting the commitments from the. Parties and players and putting those up, but that's kind of where they're at right now. Guess that's where I went first, just off last.
Did you listen, Mary?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, it was Tom Mess. That was the first time we ever had him, usually I have Sherry, so. It was good.
What's that?
I had Mike when I went. He's the, kind of the sports dude now.
Yeah, so, um, I don't see anything else on here that.
Yeah, they talked about my one and Together We Build. They were, well, that, their precast possibly could come in April. So, we'll see.
What's today, twenty-first? Well, that's only ten days late.
Wow.
Forty, cause there's thirty days in there.
Yeah.
Well, they, remember when you said, well, we started getting calls, it should be thirty-five days.
Well, there, there are ways away yet, they're still waiting to do their plumbing and. Stuff like that.
You know, it's, it's not. It's not any fun to hurry up and wait, but, uh, you know, we know what's the supply chain doing, and we're no different than the rest of the world, basically, so.
No, I did some poking around our side just to see, and I, I still. I don't wanna talk to John, I wanna talk to Alex, cause they talked about sloping that East Bank instead of the wall. There's that apartment that comes clear over from the building, are they gonna take part of that, cause. That seems to be right with that retention pond, in my brain should be. But there's a.
You're just not seeing it right now, don't worry.
Okay, no, very, I, I'm just.
You're talking on the south side of the building.
I'm talking in the northeast side.
Yeah, but that don't go that far. It, I, I mean, your, our utility building is on the north side of it.
On the east side of our utility building, we're talking about putting a retention line for the water to drain. But where that slope is, that we got that easement with the speaker building. On that northeast corner, there's a apartment line that comes almost to where the building started. And I was just like.
I'm not an engineer.
Nothing else, motion to adjourn.
Oh, suck it.
Have a motion of second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Well, she carried, meaning adjourns.